Okay, Planning Board Meeting, October 3rd is now opening and the first thing on the agenda, before I even say that, I keep forgetting, we're being recorded and videotaped. First thing on the agenda, Form A, Lot 2, King Street, who is here for?
That didn't come in.
Oh.
It was supposed to come in, that's the piece of property that the town is buying for the drainage parcel, and they haven't finalized that yet, they've been working on it for two weeks, and Ed was hoping to have it by tonight, but it didn't come in, so we have to skip that.
Well, all right, that one skipped. Next on the agenda, Form A, Lot 2, King Street, 11-86, and before Mr. Proppet begins, Mr. Proppet has represented me in front of this board in the past, so I will abstain from voting on this Form A. So with that said, Mr. Proppet?
Good evening, Attorney Brian Proppet, Councilman for the applicant, Deborah Rebel. We're in front of you tonight for the signing off of a Form A lot. It's kind of hard to see, but that one lot was 88 Orchard Street. We have cut off the back portion, which is now considered Lot 2.
So before you get going, you have, this is Orchard.
Correct.
And this is?
King Street.
King Street. So you're on the corner of Orchard and King.
Yep.
And this was Mrs. Sleaze's house.
I was going to say, Sleaze's house.
Yep. Okay, so, now that everybody knows where we are?
Sure. Thank you very much, Senator. Anyway, so this is the parcel that was cut off here, this is now Lot 2. It has the required frontage on King Street, it has 160 feet of frontage, so we're in compliance with Article 5 of the zoning bylaw. It's a little undersized, it's around 32,000 square feet. We did go in front of the ZBA and obtained a variance for that lot and for this plan. The appeal period has run on that. We asked the town clerk for the certificate, no appeal has been filed, it's all done, we just need to pick it up. So with that, we're asking for a sign-off on this plan.
Do you, oh, Burke's got the paperwork.
I don't need one, just looking at it, it's just a, no wetlands on the lot?
No wetlands, and the rest of the lot complies, has all the setbacks are in compliance, no wetlands and required frontage.
Is the variance listed on the, on your cover sheet there?
On the plan itself?
On the plan?
There's, the variance is not listed. Actually, that was the, the plan we presented to the ZBA, so it wasn't on before we, obviously it wasn't on before we asked for the variance.
Okay, that was going to be my question. Is the plan in front of us the same plan that went before the zoning board?
Exact same plan.
The exact same plan. Russ, this plan is entitled Plan of Land 88 Orchard Street in Rainham, Massachusetts, Outback Engineering, dated July 12, 2019?
Yep.
Okay. The board said they voted to grant variances in Rainham zoning by law, Section 5.1 minimum requirements area to allow the property at 88 Orchard Street, Rainham, to be divided into lots as shown in the above referenced plan that was submitted by petitioner with the application for public hearing, and it was three votes for yes.
And he mentioned there's the-
And that's to make two lots?
Yeah.
Because we've got two undersized lots, right? Not just one?
Yes, the way they divided it up.
And that's what, and that-
Yep, the variance allows the two undersized lots.
Then I looked at the assesses map when this, when this was first, and that was already a lot back in the day, when all the lots surrounding it was 30,000.
And it merged.
That's why they, like the zoning board gave them-
It was actually subdivided in 1973, but because of the zoning changes for the town, and also because the doctrine of merger kind of came about in between those times, we thought it was prudent to go back in front of the ZBA and ask for variance.
John, do you have any questions?
No.
Russ, any questions?
Any questions?
Anybody out there have anything to say? No. I make a motion that we approve a Plan of Land 88 Orchard Street, Rainham, Massachusetts, by Outback Engineering, dated July 12, 2019, as a plan not requiring subdivision approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain? Okay. You got it.
Thank you. We do, we did provide the Mylar, so the board can sign off on it tonight?
Yep. Day's three, yeah. Well, while he is signing that, I make a motion that we waive the reading and approve the minutes of the Thursday, September 19, 2019 Planning Board Meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And while we have time, our next, well, before I get into the discussion with Steve about basins, that public hearing's at 6:15, so I have to wait. Steve, I'm going to, Burke's going to open up the planning board meeting at 6:15, they asked for continuance, so he'll continue that, and then I want to discuss, we have next public hearing at 6:25 for the Rainham Preserve. So I want to talk about our, catch, wet basins. You all set?
All set.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
So, the wet basins, did everybody receive their memo from Steve?
Yeah, I didn't have time to review it.
Okay. I went through it, and, do you have your copy?
I, I don't have my copy, but that's fine.
On questions that I have.
Okay.
Under 8.4.1.
Excuse me, Dan. Steve, you want to take it down, Chris, he's, he's not, he's not going to, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And just so, for people that are watching, what this is for is we are looking to adopt allowing wet basins again.
And what, what basins are?
Wet basins are, detention area that basically holds water 10 months out of the year.
So it's for-
Drainage for subdivisions.
Water that runs into a roadway and then goes into a basin off of the road and holds the water.
And these basins are designed to filter and clean, dirty runoff water from cars, from salts and-
Impervious surfaces.
Oh, yeah. And cleans it before it heads off into the wetlands.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think constructed stormwater wetland might be a better name for it instead of a wet basin.
Yeah, I saw that. I've always, since I, since we've been working on it, it's been wet basins, so now all of a sudden you changed the abbreviation on me, so I apologize for that. But anyway, so I went through it all, and under 8.4.1.
Yep.
If you look at D.
Yep.
There shall be at least four test pits, and viewed by a licensed soil evaluator. I would like to, it, to say, there shall be at least two test pits observed by licensed soil evaluator to determine the water table and estimate seasonal high groundwater.
Okay.
In addition, additionally, test pits may be requested by the licensed soil evaluator.
Additional?
Additional. Additional tests may be requir, may be requested by the licensed soil evaluator?
May be required.
Required. Required. I can't read my own writing.
So is that-
Do you want to put a limit on that, up to two more?
No, I don't want to put a limit on it, because if, if he has to chase around-
Or, or should be, may be required by the planning board.
I, I was just going to say, I think that might be the better approach, because when I, as I wrote licensed soil evaluator, that was, my thinking was the applicant would have their person, who's a soil evaluator, doing the tests.
Okay, because I did, I did have planning board also, but then I scribbled it out only because, I mean, this guy's stamping the plan, he's putting his, his, you know, if you go, if you keep going, wherever inspections and all this other stuff's in here, so, let me get into, we can, we can add planning board if you, or planning board's representative or whatever.
And that, and that-
Yeah, it gives us the option, I just don't, if we put it in there, then maybe you can word it so it's-
It kind of follows what happens, yeah, it follows what happens with plans that are submitted to the board today, whereas the applicant will have their licensed soil evaluator do the test pits for basins and then give us the results, and if there's a question, then we can always do more.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I don't want to have to have our-
Our engineer can come back and say, you might think maybe somebody else should take a look at a couple more.
Exactly, but that's in our, that's in our, that's in our review process. We can, he'll do, in his report that he does, that he's going to give us, he can say, I would like to-
Additional test pits.
I would like additional test pits, and I would like to be there.
Yep.
You know, we've done that in the past.
Exactly.
My concern with having four, at least four, when you do a test just to observe water, you're digging these holes, and you could be out in the woods, and you got this, all the, the underbrush, and when you're backfilling it, you're just backfilling all the debris in, people are not careful when they're backfilling. So you have, now you're going to have these four big 10-foot holes in the, in somewhere in the basin, the bottom of the basin, that we don't want to have settling. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
So having a bunch of test pits isn't, in my opinion, it's just, it's not worth-
Okay.
Ruining the land for, to gain.
And I think size too. If you've got a small, you could be digging up the whole thing.
And that's where, and that's why I put, if it's up to the evaluator, okay, we have this, you know, big area, let's, you know, let's add another one. So I just, that's my only reason for that, is digging big 10, 12-foot holes, if they have to go down that deep, and then backfilling it all with all the waste that's around. If the land's cleared and it's clean, that's one thing, but if it's in the process of being designed, you know, there's trees and everything else out there that's just going to get bulldozed over and-
That's fair, okay.
Do we want to say that the planning board may request, or their representative may request additional pits?
May require.
Oh, may require, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, we can, Steve can reword.
Yeah, so that the, yeah, the planning board at their discretion could request additional test pits.
Require.
Why? Is that, is that a better, yeah?
Again, they have, they're hiring the licensed soil evaluator, so-
Right.
It's his stamp, it's his license, you know, I think we've put the burden on him, and, you know, you can put on there that, you know, we have the option to view them or whatever. The other thing I have that I don't like is M. The applicant shall provide an interim as-built of the basin at 50% completion for review. The as-built will provide rough grades in the interior sides and any pipe inverts. Now, you have that one, and then right after that on N, you have the wetland scientist and landscape architect shall provide construction oversight and shall provide field reports to the board at 25, 50, and 75% completion, and a final report upon completion indicating that design meets the intent. If you are the guy building this, and I'm working in the water table, and you're going to ask me to halt at 50%, this is going to be a problem. We've got to de-water, there's, you know, there's going to be issues. If I, if I have to turn around and wait and get a full 50% completion plan, as-built plan, and provide it with the grades and stuff, you already say that 25, 50, and 75, you want inspections.
I guess, yeah.
I just don't, I don't want it to be a delay for the person doing the installation, because again, now we're working on the water table. Soon as you open up that water table, you're going to come back the next day and you're going to have water.
Right.
There's going to be, you know, the one thing I didn't see in here was any de-watering regulations about the work, I don't know if, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I guess I didn't want to get that, and I honestly didn't think of it, because I, that becomes a means and methods for the contractor, so I don't, I didn't want to be, have the regulations directed at them.
And that's fine, and, and that's fine, I just, a simple, a simple paragraph saying any de-watering efforts being taken to complete the project needs to meet, whatever, needs to meet the regulations.
Yeah.
Just so they put silt fence, they put, if there's catch basins or whatever, we don't want to pump and dirt out into somebody's street or backyard or-
I know this depends on size, but typically if somebody goes in, starts, and works through to finish, how many days would it be that they'd be working?
These are, these are going to be a little trickier, because it's not just building a basin and, you know, and putting a fine grade to it. This is, this is, this is going to take some contour in and some design to it. I would say, I would say a week anyway. You're going to, you're going to wind up getting in there and roughing it out in two days.
But-
Again, depending on the size.
Yeah.
My concern is, as soon as you get down, as soon as you get down to the water table, this year, this, this year we had a very high, the water table was awful all the way up until I was mowing the field, and it was, it was still wet, July.
Yep.
Last year it was dry as a bone, and, you know, two months prior. So, you know, it's a kind of, I'll, you know, it's going to depend on, on the location and-
Well, I'm just wondering, we're talking about field reports and interim as-built and things.
I, I-
If they're, if they're done start to finish in a week, they're going to, they're going to be done before they have a chance to come back to us.
Well, that's my concern, I don't, and that's why I say, if we eliminate M altogether, I don't, I don't think we need to have 50% completion as-built at 50%, because we already say and we're asking for 25, 50, and 75%.
I, yeah.
So that, that wetland scientist is going to be there for that week.
And where's that field report going?
To the board.
It's coming to, it's going to be going.
Well, it'll be going to us, but-
It's going to be going.
Coming to us, or coming to, I mean, who's really overlooking the?
He is.
He is along with the-
The town's engineer, along with their side, along with their wetlands.
Well, along with the highway superintendent.
Uh, no, Ed's busy enough. It's up to us to get these things built. It's going to be up to him or our representative.
Well, if he doesn't like the way things are going at 25 or 50%.
Just like anything else, we stop. And then, now they got-
And I guess the 50% interim as-built, just going on recent past experience where we weren't getting as-built in a timely manner, and, and there was some argument, do we need to give as, you know, red line as-built or not, and, you know, finding that there were issues before we get to a certain elevation with-
Right, but again, now, you know, Mike, as soon as you give, we're working on the water table now, though.
Yep.
So you're already asking, we don't ask for this in our regular one, 25, 50, and 75%.
We do ask for red line as-built, so I know we don't get-
We do at the end.
At the end, yes.
Well, the way this is being, the way this is going, is being designed, I'm looking at, this wetland scientist is going to probably be out there.
I wonder if it's a clarification as, as far as maybe for plantings and for, in the general distribution of the plants at those milestones?
Well, that's landscape architect, though.
Yeah.
I think it's two different things. The plantings and the wetland scientist, isn't, isn't the wetland scientist going to be more for the design?
They, well, that's the thing, they overlap, so the wetland scientist could also look at the plants in addition to the landscape architect, and they could also be looking at the hydraulics of it as well. There is an overlap between the two. So I, I could see it where if there's a landscape architect that is comfortable enough looking at hydraulics and understanding plants, that they could be the only person that would be doing oversight and not necessarily a wetland scientist.
All right, so think about, redo that if you, if you could, and if, again, I don't know if you guys are agreeable, take, taking that 50% review as-built.
So you don't, you don't like M?
I don't like M at all.
Okay.
I don't think you need to do a field report and the as-built at the same time.
No, because N does the 25, 50, and 75. Basically, that guy's going to be there.
Yeah.
He's going to be out there for a good week.
I get, yeah.
Periodically through all that week as that thing's being designed. And again, it all depends, like you said, how big it is.
Right.
If we have a big one, he might, you know, it might be taken, you know, he might be out there, you know, even longer. Smaller one, a couple of days, you're done probably. So, all right, so, you know, again, working in the water just worries me that as soon as we, you know, you break that ground, you break that water table.
You're in trouble with-
Forget it, you better have all your apples in place and make sure that you're ready to finish, because it's going to be a mess. And that could be, depending on the time of year, you know? I remember when, because, not the preserves, yeah, the preserve, when that first started, it was, it was wet, and we had a lot of issues early on.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if you could redo that one.
Okay.
And on O.
Yep.
I have, the applicant shall provide yearly reports by landscape architect and/or wetland scientist. You might even be able to use that and/or on N, where you said they, where, you know, they overlap.
Yep.
I would like to see take out up to two years after completion.
Mm-hmm.
And leave it, the applicant shall provide yearly reports by the landscape architect or wetland scientist to the board indicating that the CSW has established vegetation habitats, bats, birds, pollinators, stormwater control, and water levels are maintained for at least 10 months per year. The report shall also indicate any sediment accumulation in the forbay or main cells. The applicant shall be responsible for all report, no, no, this is what I'm adding, for all reports, all reports on a yearly basis in sediment removal until the development is accepted by the town of Rainham. And the reason why I did that, some projects take five, six years, so if we're saying in other projects might only take a year, so if this thing gets turned over, if it's a small project and it gets turned over to the town, I don't want to go on town property and have to do a test two years later.
Okay.
If I was the developer. I just, you know, I, I don't think that's-
So you want to strike out the part where it says up to two years after completion?
I would take out, yeah, I would take that part out.
Okay.
Up to two years after completion, because again, if the town accepts this, accepts the roads, basically we're accepting the roads and the basins.
Right.
So we're satisfied at that point. We might not accept the roads because the basins, these basins might have a longer, need a longer vegetation time, so we might say no.
Okay, that's fair.
But, that's why if we put it in there where they have to do the yearly reports and clean out for the sediment until the town accepts it.
Wasn't there maintenance, sediment renewable every 10 years or something?
Correct.
That is-
So we do, we need the sediment, you scrape the whole bottom out, now you got to replant everything?
It's a base, it's a, that's, well, I don't know, the 10 years, you're talking about that report you saw?
That's in the-
That ain't going to, that's not going to happen.
Is most of the sediment's going to get caught in the-
Storms after, or whatever, the mechanical separator before it gets to the four bay.
Which gets, which gets cleaned.
Which gets cleaned out once a year or-
Once a year.
Which is something that Ed Buckley, credit Ed, came up with that. He would rather go with a pump truck and pump out this storm scepter than doing that.
Getting into the forbey.
That's the dumbest thing I've ever heard, because it's not going to get done.
Well, so not much sediment is going to escape into the basin?
No.
Because if it does, and you clean it out once every 10 years, then you're starting all over again.
Exactly.
Scraping it all out.
You reconfigure in the whole basin, it's, it's not going to happen. If it, if it, if it does happen, I would love for, tell me where.
Yeah, right, right.
It's just, so that was a good thing that Ed came up with that, because he wants to go there with his pump truck and just suck out the debris, and he can do that on a yearly basis, which, you do that on a yearly basis, you'll never have sediment going in the bottom of your, so if we could just change that. And then on Q, you have the applicant shall use the construction stormwater wetland section and stormwater handbook found. Does that have the pictures and the diagrams and all the other stuff?
It does, yep.
My concern, stormwater handbook, you know, pages and so on, what happens when they redraw the handbook and they add a couple pages?
Excellent point. I can just say, in the stormwater handbook current edition, and strike the rest, or latest edition.
Well, I mean, you're, you're talking about what's on page 36.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I could strike out that last, so after stormwater handbook latest edition, and then strike the rest.
How long is the stormwater handbook? How many pages?
A lot.
So we're going to go from one page to 1,000 pages that they're responsible for?
Just put in parentheses at the end.
Well, it's a, it's clear, it's, if you're familiar with the, with that stormwater handbook, you know to go to volume 2 when they're, they break out all the different VMPs for stormwater, and so you could find that section.
I like seeing the page and stuff in there, because for, you know, people like us-
But I think it has to say the-
Latest edition?
Two, well, whatever edition is, 2017, 18, 19?
Okay.
And they rewrite one every year or?
Well, no, it's, I think, it came out in 2008, and they may have done a minor update in 2010 or 2012 or something.
Well, I'd use whatever one of those dates makes sense.
Okay.
So, that was all that I had on mic, and I went through quite a bit, and again, I was looking at it as if I was going to be doing the installation, because I, so I'm not sure, you know, if you just put something in there in one sentence about if de-watering is needed.
Yeah, I can do that.
Follow, you know, standard de-watering practices.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's easy enough, I can do that in a general way that people know what they need to do.
Just so they, yeah, people, it's common sense, people know what they, if they have to stop pumping out, then they know they got to use sandbags or filters or something.
Exactly.
Now, you had mentioned, did you get a copy of this? Okay. All right, if you could make sure that you get his email.
Evan, I have Evan, and I have Lee's as well.
Oh, okay.
So I can make the changes.
Make those changes, and then send them out.
Send them, okay.
And then, that way there you have a copy, and if there's any, if there's any remarks, come- comments, one way or the other.
Yeah, I'd like to actually put input as, you know, working on a project in town, and also as a resident of the town, I'd like to, you know, I'd give some input for that.
Well, I'd like to, because, again, we're, this is gonna be our very first new adoption to our bylaw, so I want it right. And, you know, I look at it as if I'm gonna do it, you know, but, you're the guy, you know, you guys design them, and you're out there all the time, if there's something that isn't gonna work, just, you know, bring it up now.
Sure.
I don't wanna over, I don't wanna overburden developer, but I also wanna make sure that we get what the town's needs, because this thing isn't getting cleaned and maintained besides the base, the manhole getting pumped out, so, it's gotta be right the first time. Anything else on this here?
I will say that Ed and I have been trying to connect on this, I don't know if you had comments, but we couldn't this week, so.
Yeah, I spoke to Ed a couple of times, he's, he's pretty busy down there doing secretarial work, and Joe was out on vacation, and, uh, he's paving a lot of roads and redoing a lot of roads in town.
Boy, sure are.
Yep.
You know, so.
For while he couldn't get anywhere. King Street was blocked, Mill Street was blocked, Senate Street.
So, I'm around Tuesday, so I'll try to connect with Ed on Tuesday.
Yeah.
See if we can get some edits while.
And I had told him that we were, I told him that we were working on it, and I told him that everything that we discussed that day in that meeting in his office, I said, "Those are the things we're implementing, plus engineering practices." So, I said, you know, "Other than what we discussed, unless there's something earth-shattering, then I wouldn't worry about it."
Yeah.
Just give it your blessing.
Well, is there some cleaning up to do in general, rules and regs, things that don't seem to be working or not working anymore?
There, yeah, there are some details in particular that Ed wants to revise and update, and.
In a general rule, rules and regs? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We have a lot of stuff that we have.
And then I know, and on the first page of the memo here, 8.1, I updated some of the language there as well, because that's, it's referencing.
Probably about four months ago, we voted to hire.
So, this is the first pass at, you know, updating, getting the constructed stormwater wetland regulation in, updating the language at 8.1 for stormwater, and then, as far as the details, Ed and I will go sit down and revise details and update those, and then other parts of the regulation he and I can talk about with you as well, and, you know, adjust and amend. There's some outward control structures that were fine, you know, back in the day, but now aren't used anymore, and so, requesting waivers for things, and, you know, smaller items in the section four, talking about different line weights and different color pens and things like that, that don't even apply anymore, so, it's those things that we'll be striking or revising.
And then on our next here, I have some things in there that's gonna be, we'll have to talk about for the cluster developments. So, anything else on this one document? If anybody has anything additional, just please send it along to Steve, 'cause I think everybody got a copy.
Or if not, send it to Maureen, who can then mail it to me, if that's okay. Maureen emails, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
It took more than 15 minutes, but, Burke, you can.
We have a public hearing, continued public hearing, Cumberland Farms for 883 Broadway, Route 138, and they have asked to continue it. They are still talking with especially traffic impact studies, peer reviews, and the usual engineering things. They are asking to go on to our next meeting. What is the time to act on this?
December 1st, I believe.
Yes.
Oh, okay, we got plenty of time then. They ask that this be continued to our next available meeting, which is October 17, 2019. I make a motion that we continue the public hearing on Cumberland Farms to October 17, 2019, at 6:15 PM. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain. And note, there was no, no testimony taken.
Are you here for Cumberland Farms? Did you get that date?
October 17th.
In the time? All right, they still have some things to work out with, I guess, the review engineer and highway department, so, all right? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, next is the public hearing for the Rainham Preserve, open space. You can put your pretty picture on there. Bob has it on TV, and.
I'll put some paper copies for the 17s for the board.
Good.
Thank you.
State your name for the record. It's Evan Watson from Prime Engineering, representing the applicant.
Bob, he's a paper copy here.
I have a small, a 11 by 17s for the board. Before we begin, sorry, I wasn't available for the last couple of meetings. We had a brief accident, injured myself, and just wanted to take a minute, and just in case the first responders do, in town, do watch the planning board meetings in the firehouse, to say, they do a very good job, and thank you very much for helping me out in my time of need. So, Greenham first responders are the best. So, with that being said, continuing on, once again, we've been receipt of a review letter from Mr. Van Treska, Niche Engineering, that was back in April, and we've actually had a chance to redesign everything. We've incorporated the new sewer location, which we've had approval from at the Conservation Commission and the Sewer Department, so that allowed us to lower the road and address the majority of these concerns. The first thing I wanna point out is that the waiver list, we've tried to reduce the number of waivers by as much as possible, and, you know, looking at the new proposed regs that you guys are putting forth, we should be able to comply with almost all of everything. So, with our application, we've also updated the waiver list. So, things such as, we were asking for a waiver for the fence, we can, we can put in the proper fence. We were asking for HDPE piping, we can, we can do classified concrete piping.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Where is the waiver list on here?
So, I brought a copy of the waiver list.
All right, it's not, it's not in the plan?
It's not in the plan, it's a separate letter, so.
So, if you look at the.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, stable.
If you look at the overall plan, the overall design that we have here, it's not any different than what we've been discussing the last couple of meetings. We still have the wet basin proposed, we still have the same roadway geometry. We're coming in, again, we've reduced the number of lots from 28 to 26 lots, and we've lowered the road, and we're showing on our, all of our plans, the grading for all the lots, the proposed house location for all lots, and the proposed tree line for all the lots. So, we've really been able to open up the streetscape, if you will, to separate the houses a little more, to have a little more trees in between the houses, and incorporate a lot of the things that we were discussing in the past. Couple of roadblocks that we're up against now before we can really finalize our plans. If you read my letter here, we haven't presented the definitive subdivision plans or the drainage calculations, and that's basically because we have a few things we still wanted to discuss and make sure that we're clear on. And that, number one, was that the basin was basically the way that it's going to be, number one, and number two, to discuss the actual layout of the road. At the last meeting, we more or less nonchalantly said that, yes, we can have a layout instead of being 50 feet to be 40 feet, but, again, there's some choices with that as well. If you have the road, because we have a sidewalk on one side versus the other, if we put the roadway in the middle, it puts the sidewalk right at the back of the right-of-way and things of that nature, so I wanted to make sure that was straightened away before I developed all those plans. So, I don't know if we wanna switch over to the detail sheet.
Well, before we.
I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Before we go to the detail sheet.
Mm-hmm.
Talking about the layout and stuff, um, we, we discussed the Bassett know, about the trees that are being planted are almost in the middle of the yards because of the 50-foot layout.
Yes.
So, we said that we can do, and I feel the 40-foot layout going forward is probably gonna be something we're gonna change anyway because of the size of our, width of our pavement. I went through there again today. I do like Ed's idea, and I think we should stick with it, with vertical granite on the sidewalk side and Cape Cod on the other side, I think it just, to me, it's just cleaner looking, it's nice. And I did, kind of, driving through, trying to figure out street trees. Why are street trees in people's front yards? And I did forget that with the cluster development, you only have to be 20 feet off the road, and that's our problem. Having 20 feet off the pavement or off the layout doesn't give you much room to put street trees. Street trees are not ornamental trees, they're designed for street trees. I think if you look at the bylaw, I almost think you're gonna have to ask for a waiver on the other project, because I don't think that the ornamental trees are listed in our bylaw for street trees. So, I know you talked to the tree warden, but he's not the planning board, and I'm just, you know, I'm trying to, again, I agree 100%, you're kind of in a position where, okay, your road layout had to be 50 feet, you were allowed to have the houses off of the layout at a minimum of 20 feet, not 45 feet. Limits where you're gonna put those trees. Now, our street trees don't become street trees anymore. If you think about it, and you actually draw it all out, and you follow this, it doesn't work. So, that's why, and again, I think we all agreed about doing the 40-foot wide last time.
Mm-hmm.
I think that our frontage setbacks has to be more than 20 feet, or else we're not gonna have street trees. We don't have, now, a lot of your houses over there are already set back more than 20 feet.
Every one of them, there's nothing, we're at 20.
It's impossible to go 20 feet, or else.
If you can't with the grade, it's impossible.
Exactly.
Your driveway would've been like this.
And, why don't you state your name for the record, just so we don't have to ask you here.
Be Cassinetti, he knows Cassinetti.
Okay, so.
And again, Mr. Cassinetti is in discussion about, I'm looking, this, I'm, we're doing two things here, we're looking at our regs, and we're, we're trying to look at this cluster development that's in front of us, which is our, the way I'm looking at it, is our first plan that we're gonna approve, basically with new regs.
Do we have a definition of street tree?
Yes.
Call it would be shade trees.
Shade trees, along with the caliper. Caliper is.
Because your regulations don't call it the. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, your regulations don't call out the specific species of trees. Some towns do have an actual list, that's a pre-approved list of species, you just call out for shade trees, and then, as Ken said, you.
If you got a nursery book, and you open it up to shade trees, those, you can pick, as a developer, you can pick that, and there's, they're not ornamental trees.
Well, how about something in between? It's got some shade, but it's.
Well, again, but that's not the problem, that's not the problem. The problem is where the location of them.
I think the size of them.
No, not even the size of them, it's, if we're gonna continue allowing 20 feet off of the street layout, even if we reduce our layout down to 40 feet, we're still gonna have a problem in the future by putting.
But it is a combination of both location and size of the tree. You know, it's like, if you had, if, we always try to avoid placing the trees in the middle of the, you know, the front of the house, we always try to get them to the side of the house, or off one of the wings, or whatever, but, you know, nobody wants an oak tree or, that's gonna end up growing, you know, 75 feet high with a crown that's gonna overhang your house, and, you know, that type of thing, and that's, and so, eventually, not presently, but eventually, over time, you know, the size of the tree itself does become an issue in that setting, in the clusters. When you're in a subdivision with acre lots, and you got 150 or 200 feet of frontage.
Exactly.
You got all the room in the world to do that, but in the clusters, you got a much different animal.
And that's it, you said it, in the cluster. And in the cluster, it doesn't, it's, the row trees, as much as we need trees, we just have to look at what we're gonna do. I think the distance from the road layout, number one, is gonna have to get changed, 20 feet is just, even with wet basins, we're still gonna have, you know, we're still gonna have possibly, you know, four feet higher than the elevation of the road, even with the wet basin lowering the road down.
Well, if you think about it, if you, if you, the minimum lot size in the cluster is 20,000 square feet, and your minimum frontage is 100, so, unless you enlarge your frontage, if you go with a smaller frontage, to keep your infrastructure as minimized as possible, that 100-foot frontage is gonna provide for a 200-foot deep lot, so there's really no compelling need to be at 20 feet, it's.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah.
It's, exactly, and that's just it, so, and again, when I went through there, in your second phase, it looks like you have a couple houses that are getting, that are closer than what you have in the first phase. So, I'm saying, he's, he's getting himself into a position where those street trees, 'cause that, also, your second phase or third phase, you have 50-foot layout.
Oh, yeah.
And you're getting into, so you're gonna, you're winding up, you're, you're in a direction of having a problem with your, with your, placing your trees, now they're all gonna be ornamental trees.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're, the location of those houses, you're, they're really, two of them that I saw today, really close.
Yeah, with, yeah, with the road bends.
Exactly, so I'm saying.
Turn the house, and it was.
I'd like to, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just, as we're laying out all these lots, and part of the conservation subdivision concept is to have the roads a little more narrow and a little more curved.
Right.
To slow everything down, so when you get into those spots where there is a steep curve, sometimes you may put the house what appears to be 30 feet from the road, but as the road bends around, you end up getting a little close. So, if you were to update the regs to say a 30-foot or 40-foot setback, what it may be, I would recommend to allow the board to grant a waiver of that in certain instances, 'cause if we have to have a set 35-foot.
If we're already doing a waiver, though, for a cluster, we're really, we're down to, the minimum as it is, and then if we're gonna give a waiver.
Just in circumstances, it's, all I'm saying is, it might preclude some of the curvilinear designs that you're trying to achieve, so.
All right, so, and, you guys, you haven't seen it, so, if you have time, though, I would, you know, just drive by, because, again, we're gonna be spending time on our regs, and I, I wanna try to get them so they, not just work, but they, you know, the subdivisions look nice. Drive, drive by what? Drive by, go into the second phase of the preserve, you can go through the first phase too, and see how nice, it looks nice, the sidewalks are in, it looks sharp.
What's the street for this, going into the second phase?
Goldfinch.
Goldfinch?
The second phase is Sparrow Way.
Sparrow?
Okay.
So, you won't, yeah, when you get in, and you'll know which two houses that I'm talking about, I mean, they, as soon as you go around the corner, they stand out. Now, let's just take those two, for example. Now, let's just take those two, for example. Couldn't you have backed those up a little more, because the way they're situated, I know you're going around the corner, but you didn't have to stick with maybe your frontage is wider on one than versus the other?
What we did was, we're trying to keep the same streetscape along, like with all the houses as they come along. So as the houses basically line up all together, as you look down the front yards, and then the road bends in, if I kept that-
Say you had a larger frontage on one lot. If you created a larger frontage on that lot.
That, the ones on the curved lots have excess frontage. So that's, that's basically what ends up happening. Yeah, so you have excess frontage and it pinches in. So as we're trying to maintain that same front yard line, as the garage comes around the back, it pulls it in. So that's all I was suggesting is, the majority of the lots, if you even look at this plan, they're all at about forty to fifty feet back from the road. Except for when you come around the corners, or, you know, in this case, I don't have some of those hard curves. I have an intersection, but-
But you do have, and I'm glad you brought that, whoop, did I get you, Maureen? You do have these here that look kind of-
Yes.
Close.
Yep.
Now, and I was looking on the plan to see if you had a measurement, but I didn't see one. What are, what are these off of the layout?
Those are closer. I have a scale. I could probably measure that.
Because if you look, and again, if we are asking for street trees, the street tree is basically right on that line, which, that tree's probably only ten feet off the front of the house.
So those are twenty-five feet back, and then the house, I'm sorry, the, so the street trees were asked to be ten feet from the edge of the road. So that-
So that's about ten feet from the house?
Now, that plan shows the fifty-foot right-of-way. If we go, if you look at the screen-
Oh, that wasn't changed down to forty?
Right, that's the, that's just the color presentation plan. But if you look at the screen behind you, it adds an additional five or six feet, and then the street trees would be ten feet back from that, so it would be a good twenty feet.
But I look at this, and I say, okay, why can't they do a little angle here?
Well, not only the angle, but which is likely how this one in particular, I would definitely lay that out on an angular setting. But neither one of these houses has to be, there's enough depth on both of them. They don't have to be at twenty-five. They have just a, an arbitrarily, you know, just for presentation.
There's enough room.
We wouldn't place those houses.
Okay, so, if you look at, so if you look at those, because again, I think that twenty feet is definitely, when we start doing our review, you really have to give us, the board, some rough drawings, forty feet sidewalk one side, if we have sidewalk on two feet, just so everybody can understand exactly what we're, what we're going to be adjusting and approving. Street trees, house location, what, what's the minimum? If I turn around and I go forty, if we change our bylaw to forty feet, what would be the minimum? If we change it to forty, you know, keep the frontage at forty-five feet? Now, again, this is, because these are getting turned over to the town of Rainham. So we do need some room on both sides of the road. The regs on a cluster are the same as an adult retirement community. And I don't want to get too much into it, but the adult retirement is basically a, it's not being turned over, being twenty feet off of the road. You want chartered driveways. But you don't need a layout. You don't need a fifty-foot layout. Because you have, it's all, it's all association. You people own their lot, but it's all being, it's a private community. It's an association. Where, when something like this, where the town's going to own it, the layout is going to depend on doing street trees, any work that's outside that layout area. So we got to look at, we got to look at that, Steve, and just do a drawing, yes.
Bear in mind, the street trees aren't on the, aren't inside the layout. They're outside the layout.
No, I understand that. And that's why I say, like, if you look on that plan, if we, if we did stick with the twenty-five feet, that tree is only ten feet from the house, so it doesn't become a street tree. And that's what I'm, you know, it's, in another example, as soon as you drive into your, the first, the first phase, you have a, you built a stone wall out of stones. Well, normally, that's where the street tree would be going, but that stone wall now is interfering with the street tree. So your tree is going to be up, it's not a street tree anymore. It's basically going to have to be up in the middle of the lawn, which is up. So the whole, I envision, street trees, you go into subdivisions and you've got, you know, a nice row of trees. That's the, that's the idea of a street tree.
I don't like cookie cutter.
All right. It does list. It's these, it's these narrower rows that wind, so you're going through the jungle. You take-
I agree. You know, you've got shade trees.
Ornamental. Have them put in small shade trees or large ornamentals. I mean, there's something that's appropriate for a particular lot with a particular house setting.
All right, but when you specify in your rules of regs-
Well, I think shade, leave shade trees fine, but they talked about asking for a waiver. Let them ask for a waiver and convince us to some other tree.
Well, he's going to, he has to ask for a waiver. He has no choice. He's going to have to.
We met with the tree warden to discuss the species of trees with him to, you know, make sure that he was certain, both, you know, in terms of the zone you're in and the hardiness of the trees and that they would be effective. But when you, just referring to smaller shade trees, that's kind of a oxymoron. There really isn't such a thing. If it's a shade tree, it's a larger-
Especially when we list a four-inch caliper.
It's a larger tree, well-
Four-inch caliper's not a small shade tree.
But no, and the tree is, there is, it, by definition, it's a shade tree, so it's going to grow-
That has a full football on it.
Large, it's going to have a huge crown on it eventually, and it's going to be a larger tree. So, you know, it's really-
I'm just bringing this up.
If you define it as a shade tree, it's destined to be a large tree.
It's not as simple as just coming up with a tree species. It's, this is what's going to, just, what is, we're going to be needing to discuss about our road layouts, trees, and the whole, that whole mechanism. Because it's just doesn't, and again, regular subdivisions, they seem to be fine. Go to King Estates, I drive through there, and you don't have the problem. We, they, there was a, you know, the bank foreclosed on it. We wound up picking and choosing where the trees went because there was no more money. But where the trees are, it looks nice. The houses, it's, it's a, it's a road tree. It's a street tree, which is what the regs are. So it might be that we do cluster developments in this, the smaller lot developments with one ornamental tree in the front yard. But just, I want you to remember that.
Did the tree warden suggest any species to you?
They, they did, our landscaper was the one who talked with them specifically, but I think they, I think they agreed upon and discussed lilacs, dogwood, pear. And there's a fourth.
Those fall within, which is reasonable?
Yeah, now, the pear trees, I would, the pear trees, I would be, I would not recommend putting a pear tree over there because the pear trees, they're very dense. They grow, they're tall, they, but it's beautiful.
Yeah.
But it's dense, and when you're that close to the house, it's, it's going to, and people are going to look out their front window and they're not going to see it. Dogwoods, dogwoods are, not these suckers, these things are, this is a, a pear tree is, is, when the leaves are on, it's solid. Beautiful in May, but other than that, it's a really nice tree, but not for a small front yard.
Yeah, example that I've seen-
Dogwoods would be perfect. You can get different colored dogwoods to-
I got a dogwood, twenty-five.
They're, they're hardy, they're, you know, different types of flowers, different color flowers.
They're high, they'll get to, you know, dogwoods will get to be that tall, but their crown doesn't develop like, like an oak or a maple. You know, they have a contained crown, and that's what makes them, you know, suitable if they're closer to a house that, you know, you're not overtaking the house with the, you know, the crown of the tree.
Yeah, I'm not sure what was the requirement over in Whipperwill, but that's an example of a conservation subdivision that's a little more established. And driving through there, if I visit people, I don't see that the shade trees planted all along the road. What appears to have been done there, and I don't know if it's just individually or if it was part of the developer package, but it's almost as if each lot got two ornamental trees within a certain distance of the road. And then, once the people bought the house, they took that as an opportunity to do some landscaping and add some bushes and things around it. So it actually ends up coming, looking up pretty nice, you know, if, and that would give everybody a little bit of flexibility too, to sight the trees. Like you said, if, if the lot calls for retaining wall in the front, it's difficult to sight a tree within ten feet of the road. So if, maybe as an example, each lot should have two trees, you know, either a shade tree or an ornamental tree, you know, something of that nature. And that would give flexibility, you know, within a certain distance.
We're going to rely on Steve to give us some feedback. And again, pitches?
Just like to add a footnote to that. You know, the regulations, yours as well as pretty much every town's, whether it's forty feet, fifty feet, or whatever. You know, it says every fifty feet, and when you put a plan like that together-
I think it says every forty feet.
Yours is every forty feet, it is. And when you put a plan like that together, you know, it, it shows it engineered as every forty feet. But you know that that's impossible to achieve.
It's, exactly.
So what your regulation should call upon is a ratio of one tree every forty feet of road length, but placed, whether it's the ward, your tree warden or whoever does it, but, you know, as I said, we don't like to place out the trees right smack dab in the middle of the front of a house. You can't put it in the middle of a driveway if you show a left-hand house, but you turn it into a right-hand, whatever. So, you know, you just can't, realistically, you can't literally do them every forty feet. If I, if I measured out forty feet, I might be putting one on top of an electric transmission box that isn't even shown on the plan. So you've got to take things like that into account as well.
And that's why I say, you know, and I'm, I'm bringing this discussion up more, you know, you guys have been kind enough to let us discuss our regs while you're doing your project, but you are going to be the first one, and I think it's a, it's a big issue, what's, you know.
I think Lee's point is good, that- More flexibility, certain number of trees, but locate them where it makes sense on each lot and as each house goes in.
Yeah, so, again, Steve, I think, you know, that's going to be, that's going to be a big thing. Because if you go around half of these places, you know, you can basically say, okay, well, this guy didn't ask for a waiver and he's not compliant. Which isn't, you know, how can we, how can we stick to one thing, but we're not going to stick to another thing? So with that said, that was, that was all I had on, on that. So if you have those couple of houses, if you just, you know, move those couple of back, and I know that's just a drawing, I think we all voted last time as a, just a, not official, but we did say that, yes, the forty feet. I would rather my, you know, my opinion on the forty feet, I would like equal amount of space on both sides of the, what's left over.
Yes, so that's basically the detail that I'm showing. So there's a couple of different things with this particular project, is we have Bayberry Road, which is a twenty-eight-foot wide road, which we're going to then narrow down a little bit. So I'm holding the side of the road as you come in, that curve line we're going to hold. And then we'll go over twenty-two feet, have a one-foot Cape Cod berm, and then it's three feet to the right-of-way. And then on the other side, we'll have the granite curbing, five-foot grass strip, five-foot sidewalk. And because we only have a half-foot berm, that leaves us with three and a half feet on that side. So like you said, it, and you end up with three feet from the back of curb and three and a half feet from the back of sidewalk.
Which is more, it's uniformed and it's the way, to me.
It's, saying it's uniform, it sounds silly because it's, like, the road is offset in the middle. But you're right, the edges are uniform.
But listen, when the highway, when the highway department or street sweep or somebody goes out there, or I go out there-
They don't see the center line.
I'm going to say, okay, the town owns to here, the town owns to here on the other side of the street.
Yep.
I'm not going to say, well, the town owns ten feet over there or four feet over here.
Yes, that's, it's a more, like you said, it's common sense for the people there.
You know, there's a lot of people that do things after, you know, we place flags, we do, you know, where's the town property? It's nice to-
It's about three feet off the back of the pavement, whether it's the sidewalk or the curb.
I myself, and again, I think, you know, anybody else can put their opinion, but I think, you know, keeping it centered.
Yeah, as an engineer, it kind of breaks our brain because the center of the road is in the center of the right-of-way, but as a homeowner, it makes a lot more sense.
Especially when the guy across the street's wondering why he doesn't have as much front yard as, well, the sprinklers are always, you know, if you had ten feet, ripping sprinklers out and-
All irrigation systems.
Irrigation systems. What else, you had, so the wet basin, Steve is going to-
Forward memo to-
You're going to, I didn't have many changes, just a couple of, just a couple of things. But if you could, you know, make those changes, send them all out to us and send it to them.
Yeah, so this design, I think complies, from what I've heard in the meeting beforehand, we did incorporate the input from Ed. We changed back from the post rail fence to the chain link fence. And then we did put a storm scepter up on the cul-de-sac to make it easy to clean out versus having to go down into the four bay. And then on, by the mail system there, there would also be a storm scepter. So again, nice and easy to maintain, and it's a system that he's used to seeing.
Now, why did you take out this, the, you asked for a waiver, you're going to use concrete pipe. Why did you take that waiver out?
We've revised our design to utilize concrete pipe, so.
So is it higher, you're higher in the road, or?
No, what we did is we upgraded to class five concrete pipe. Talking with the contractor that will likely be installing things, it's something that they would normally install anyways. So a class five, although it's more expensive, it's the better product to use.
Okay. Only because, you know, we've, we've had, we have given the waivers in the past. And, you know, I don't, unless there's a particular load rate that you're trying to get out of it, I'm not sure. But if that's fine, if you-
He, yeah, it was a specific comment from Ed. Steve, I think, did mention that, you know, HGP E is commonly used and is-
And I've told you the same thing.
Yep, but he came out and said, I would like to see concrete pipe, so we said, no, no problem. We'll agree with the DPW superintendent for sure.
All right, so what else?
Let's see, I'm just looking at the waiver here. Those were the two things that really stood kind of in the way of making sure I got the final plans. I didn't want to go and do all the definitive subdivision plans. We need to move the right-of-way edge over a half a foot or something. So that's why I could proceed with that. We had a question about the water main to not be looped. The water department did review the original plans and didn't say that, didn't ask that we have the water main looped. If you're questioning what that means, is, that would mean, because we have a dead-end road, to bring the water main all the way to the end of the cul-de-sac and turn it around and bring it all the way back out to Bayberry. And that's typically done if you have problems with pressure, or if you have problems with low flow, like in seasonal communities where you don't have a lot of full-time residents there, but-
And that's the water department's-
Yeah, so they said they were fine with that.
They're pretty smart people over there. They, you know, they'll figure out if there's something that they need, they'll, they'll tell us.
And as we pointed out, there's a hydrant at the end of the main at each cul-de-sac.
So they can clean them out.
Yep, they can flush it.
Station anyways.
And then we revised our waiver about the right-of-way and the curbing to specify, like, we talked about what's over at Rainham Preserve. The granite on one side, Cape Cod on the other.
I like that.
And I agree completely with that.
I think, you go some of our subdivisions, and I've been driving around trying to get time, I've been driving to a lot of them because I don't want to change them again, and we've kind of waived and said, well, let's do slope, let's do, let's do vertical.
Yeah, asphalt curb, I think, is too, not durable enough.
And some subdivisions with, with slope granite, what a mess.
Yep, I live in King Estates, I, I'm out there all the time pulling weeds out of the curbing.
And I see, and I see the Cape Cod-type berm still to this day on some of these older ones that look great. If they were put, you know, if they weren't done right, like, you know, Ed has a specific, he wants them, he wants them down so the pavement is, butts up with them. And, you know, if they're done right, they, they're the last.
And it's inexpensive to replace. If it does get damaged for whatever reason, it's not like resetting vertical granite curbing. it's not like resetting vertical granite curbing, you know, and it's-
No, and I, I just think it's a cleaner-looking job, I, I like it.
Um, sidewalk, we have on the low side of the street, uh, which would be on, on the, on the plan there, the, the bottom of the plan, um, and that's to kind of avoid some issues that may occur, if you have the house up on the high side, the driveway comes down, and then we need to flatten out the driveway a little quicker than we'd like to, so, uh, we propose the sidewalk on the low side, so it'd be a nice, flat driveway right up to the house, so, um, on-
And that's, and that's the requirement to maintain, to maintain the, uh, minimum pitch on the sidewalk to meet ADA requirements, um, so you're, you're forced to have to have the driveway at that, you know, at that level, um, and it, it does become pretty, uh, difficult at times when you do have it on the steeper side, and you've gotta marry that, uh, steep driveway to that flattened-out sidewalk.
And that brings us to the last waiver, and, and I would recommend that-
But it would've been good, I'm sorry to interrupt, it would've been good if the sidewalks were on the other side.
Yeah, that's-
If it was designed from the beginning, it would've been, you know, you could've done-
Clearly, clearly what they should've done, yes.
But I know, I saw all the junk going in on the other side, being backfilled, if he had to dig all that out, it would've been, you would've been digging five, four feet of, trying to replace it with solid gravel and-
Yeah, so we can start from the, on the right foot on this one, for sure, so, um, and that brings us to the last waiver request, and, and I'd recommend that this might be looked at in your regs as well, is, um, you're, you require a quarter of an inch per foot, which is maybe just about two percent, maybe a little bit more, uh, but ADA says no more than two percent, so, construction tolerance, they usually say one and a half percent cross-slope, so, um, should the ADA come out and put their level on there, and it's two-point-oh-five percent, they're gonna ask to have that cut out, so, uh, we always ask to have the cro, the sidewalks walked at one and a half percent, plus or minus.
So again, if that's a, if that's something that we should be adjusting, then, all right, well, I think, uh, anything else, members? Burke?
The aerial vicinity plan, is that getting recorded?
No, the plans that would get recorded would be the definitive subdivision plans, and that would not include the cover sheet.
Okay.
I agree, that, that's not a recordable plan there, so, um, the, the plans that you see there would get signed by the planning board, um, the MyLars would be the first six sheets, uh, definitive sheets, one through six, and those would be recorded.
Okay, 'cause I just, I don't like the coloring.
Yep.
It, as a title examiner, it drives me crazy.
Yeah, I, I don't either, I try to avoid the colors and shading as much as possible, for sure, so.
John, questions?
I'll bet.
Maureen, welcome back. Questions?
You don't wanna be back.
Steve?
No, there's work to do, no questions.
Bob?
I do, I have one question, Mr. Poynter?
Oh, yes.
Uh, the gentleman who lives up the end of Paddock, Mr. Karan?
Yep.
At that house there, you guys are go, actually off, off, um, property now, you're bringing your sewer line in along that property line?
Correct.
Uh, he expressed a concern to me that, um-
Bob, that actually-
That the pointer disappears when you shut it off.
Yeah, I know, but you don't, like, I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I know exactly.
Can you just confirm that you're within, uh, your boundaries and without a lot of contract, uh, twenty-five foot width?
Yeah, for some reason, it don't show up on the screen.
He was concerned, he was concerned that the width is, uh, more than twenty-five, and you may be on his property, so I'd like to respond to him.
That has to do with pixels, guys.
With some kind of, uh, what did you name it, up there, so I know it's used, been out there?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, can you just, uh, do your own inspection, and then get back to me on that?
Yep, um, actually, the survey crew is, we did stake out the limited clearing, and then, uh, survey's going back out there on Monday to stake the location of the manhole.
Get back to me middle of the week, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have him check out when they're out.
Now, Steve, you were, you were here at the last meeting when that gentleman was here?
Yes.
And I said, you know, you're gonna make sure, because in his backyard, where it pitches down, water's flowing?
Yep.
We don't wanna be blocking that off, it's gonna continue, so.
Continue, exactly, exactly.
Okay, just so we can stay on top of it, we don't, you know, so we don't have any issues.
I think there's a way to see his property through the, your, your property, correct?
No, you have to go up down his driveway.
I go down his driveway, okay, so I don't know if I have access to, to do that.
I do, I'll take you down.
Okay, so, okay.
And I did take a look at his driveway, and I believe that's town property, because of the layout. He was, at the last meeting, he was talking about, there was kind of cracks in it and stuff, um, yeah, it's his driveway, but it's on town property. I think when those roads get redone, which, they've gotta, they're gonna be taking care of one section, and then, uh, Ed's working on getting prices to do the rest of it, at that time, it would be getting, it'd be getting, uh, ground out and redone, so that would take care of the issue for the driveway.
Yeah, I'd just like to respond, if it was a concern.
Yep, yep. Um, that it?
Yeah, so I would ask if we could, um, you know, send the plans back out to, if, unless, uh, Steve thinks that we've satisfied all the comments from the departments, um, I don't know if they wanna take a second look at any of it, and, and to get the sign-off on there. Um, pretty much all the design work is done on the plans, it could be reviewed, um, I'll get Steve the, the calculations, um-
Well, you have, you have standard process procedures to follow with a definitive plan, which, when you file your definitive, you still have to file, you still have to-
So we filed the definitive with these plans, but just need to, to update them, to, to reflect the reduction in lots and the new forty-foot right-of-way, so, all the engineering-
I would, yeah. Instead of spend, you know, spending money, shipping them all out, making another twelve copies, and sending them to everybody under the sun, nothing's changed as far as sewer water, you've already gone to sewer, you went to water, you've gone to conservation, uh, you know, so, just, yes, Bob?
I'm already shipped these plans out, so everyone needs to-
Okay, yeah, so, I, I-
Yep, that's right.
I don't think that would be required. Uh, we'll have, if everybody has it already, then that's fine. So if there's any unsettled issues-
Yep, okay.
Get them, get them taken care of, and again, as soon as, as soon as you can get your comments back for the wet basin, I would be very interested in seeing what you had to say, um, all right? So, anything else?
Yep.
Hearing none?
Yes, so we, I'd like to ask for a continuance, then, to the next meeting.
Okay, we have, our next meeting is October seventeenth, and, we have executive session October seventeenth, and then we have, nothing else on, October seventeenth, huh?
Six fifteen, couple of funds, we put on six fifteen.
Oh. Then, I would suggest that we go, oh, come on, Philam, six fifteen, that's, that's gonna take a while.
This gonna take all that?
This, no, but we, I wanna put, uh, adopting our regs on first, uh, so we can adopt the new-
You can, you can be, you have a kind of-
No.
So you wanna do this before?
Hey, I think, so they're not, uh, so they're not hanging in there, pretty much, but when they come back, Steve's gonna be finalized, we're gonna have this, this has nothing to do with them, anyway, they just have to follow it.
And we should put couple of funds as the last thing, I don't know if anything else might-
I don't think we can, we are, we just, we just changed, we just did six fifteen in the public area.
The only reason I say that is, to have, you have to leave and then come back, is-
Do things at six oh-one, six oh-two, six oh-three.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine, you just can't change six fifteen to couple of funds.
No, but, funds, we open it within an hour.
Yep, no, that's fine.
By seven fifteen.
Then let's do the, uh, let's put these on very first, six o'clock, we're gonna do the, uh, adopting the regs, new regs for the basin, and then six oh-five, we'll put Rainham Preserve on.
Do we have the advertised rules and reg changes?
No.
Are they part of the subdivision rules and regs?
Yes.
It's a public area?
It is a public area.
It is.
And that's the fourteen-
Fourteen days.
So, October seventeenth.
That works.
All right, so you're gonna have to-
You can do it, you're gonna have to do it.
We've got to look into it.
Yeah, I, I think you can, it's too late for the paper.
Yeah.
So that comes off, we'll go to the next meeting.
Sure.
So next meeting is, uh, I know, I was just gonna get the, next meeting is November seventh.
All right, so, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll still keep you on for six oh-five, and I think what we can do, if we turn around, Steve, if we approve, if everything gets changed and done, and we're all ready to go, and if that plan can get approved at that night, with that basin, we can just make it subject to adopting our new rules and regs for the following year.
Okay, you're, you're saying the seventeenth, and then-
Yeah, so they can come in, at least they can keep moving, they can get done, we've been in front, doing this long enough, so if they come in front of us on the seventeenth, at six oh-five, and if that gets approved, we could approve it, subject to our regs getting adopted the following meeting, and then their time to, you know, time is running at the same time, and they're twenty days, and everything keeps, all right, so, that work?
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna put you at six oh-five, then, on October seventeenth, all right? Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, you might as well.
We'll make sure they get recycled.
Very good.
Okay, general business, I don't have any, do I, Maureen? I don't, we did the minutes, oh, did, yeah, we did the minutes.
Minutes are done, bills are done.
Correspondent, we don't have any?
Nope.
No correspondence?
Nope, nothing new.
Minutes, correspondence, planner, planning coordinator?
Uh-oh.
All right.
Back in April, uh, I think it was April fourth, I presented, uh, site plan for Mastria at twelve fifty-five, uh, through forty-four, they were looking to do two small additions and relocation of a, a basin, and some additional parking. Um, they didn't send in, uh, any representative, but I did bring it to the, to the, to the board of discussion.
Mm-hmm.
But my board decided that, uh, at most, it was an abbreviated site plan at most, um, and, uh, at this point, they'd like to revisit that decision and see if the board would consider just having it be a minor modification so they can move forward. Um, we had the, uh, the drainage calculations and the, uh, new basins reviewed by Conservation Agency, they approved all the additional work in the drainage, uh, new basin location. So what they've asked me to present to you tonight is, uh, the same plan that I presented back in April, but they would like you to consider it just a minor modification so they can move forward.
I think they've already moved forward, haven't they?
They did start reconstructing the basin, yes.
That was the basin with the conservation?
If they have approval from Conservation.
They didn't start anything on the, uh, at the last meeting?
There's no building permits or anything else, uh-
And at the last meeting, I don't know if you remember, but I did tell, uh, Mr. Gordon that, uh, you're gonna have to just give us back, give us, give us something, but you've already got your approval, if you're out of your, a few period of conservation, you can stop doing that. Um, so, now, those two, those two additions, they're not losing, uh, parking spaces?
It's a net gain for parking, um, this is a little bit of reconfiguration around the building, and then there's additional parking spaces in this parking lot that they constructed, and that's why they're moving the basin, they need more space.
Yeah. With, with what they're adding on, and I myself don't have a problem with, uh-
It is, I remember it was pretty-
It's a drive, basically, so they can, all the, all the dealerships-
Bob, what do you call this kind of plan?
Photo of a-
It's not GPS, it's GIS or something?
Oh, yeah.
The, the town for the location?
Yes.
GIS map?
Yes, but what do you call it when it's taken from the satellite or whatever?
The, the town website called GIS map?
GIS, it's a GIS picture, yeah.
Which is what you don't like.
I despise, despise GIS.
That's a, that was like a state, whole set of maps, a whole state, that's-
All right, then.
Why you tell every single engineer in the world not to use GIS map?
Well, it, it's not allowed in our definitive subdivisions, um, we, we already have it in some of our rules and regs.
Then if you have, uh, what I would, what I would do is, I would, uh, make a motion that we allow the minor modification, site modification map, fifteen, lot one seventy-six, twelve fifty-five, New State Highway, for Mastria Subaru, uh, to allow the two, uh, additions to the current building, and expand the, uh, storage parking lot, um, as-
As a minor modification.
A minor modification.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to update you on Christina's path, uh, on September twenty-fifth, they did crack sealing on the road on October second, a couple days ago, they raised, uh-
Can't hear you.
Okay, update on Christina's path, uh, crack sealed on September twenty-fifth, they raised structures on the second, and they actually did the final top coat today.
Oh.
Uh, so that, uh, will be waiting for a final ASB plan, and then a final inspection from Steve, and then that'll be up for, uh, a request for town road acceptance, uh, next time around, so giving you an update, update on that.
Hallelujah.
Um, I have another plan, uh, for, uh, cobblestone estates that was gave, given to me the other day by Mr. Gallagher, he had to make some changes to the plan, uh, changes because of the land court requirements, uh, the plan is the exact same, although it has more information that land court requires, he act, he gave me a MyLar, he'd like you to review it and sign it for him, so he can file it with land court, they would not allow him to file the MyLar that you signed, because it did not have enough, uh, information regarding, um, uh, survey work, and I can show you what he gave me.
And what, what is this for?
This is, uh, cobblestone, it's the subdivision at the top of King Street, the three-lot subdivision.
I didn't know it was land court. Apparently, I don't remember that.
So what he's shown here in red is additional information that he put on this plan, that wasn't apparently on the original plan, the layout and the configuration hasn't changed, it's just additional information that the land court requires, and without your signature and Mastria's signature, he can't accord it.
Is this the one that, where this is already paved?
Yeah, they just did.
Yeah, this is a private way, by, by Mr. Conn's.
You've, you've, you've compared plans?
I have not compared plans, I'm going by what he told me, but I will do that before I, I release it, if you decide to-
Ask him, ask, tell him we want to, um, him to certify that, um, this plan is exactly the same, except for the additional information with his signature and his seal.
Okay, well, I can do that before I release this, if you wanna start.
Yeah, we can do that, do you have a pen, Maureen, to-
In a shot.
I don't know why they do a MyLar, 'cause the land court, it doesn't do it the same anyway, in other words, regular registry of deeds, they go out and they take a picture of it, and you make copies of it, but the land court works the paper anyway.
I'm not sure, Burke, this is, I'm presenting to you what you presented to me.
Oh, I, land court is amazing.
And, I have one more, uh, question to discuss with you. I'm looking for a little guidance on this, because it was, it was before, it's, it's been a while since, uh, this has been reviewed, but I, it was approached by, uh, Mr. Turner from Turner Brothers Construction regarding lot ten Ford River Parkway, uh, which is a parcel of land that, uh, outside the roadway layout, uh, I guess the roadway was never constructed, because there was a, uh, a crossing with a bridge that was required to be built, and it was never built, and, and now apparently the town has taken over the land. I'll, I'll save you a lot of saying you weren't here, um- I'll save you a lot of saying you weren't here. I will have to go back and read all the minutes to those meetings. We had, we approved something, they weren't happy with what we approved, Dennis was here at the time. They were arguing about ownership, Mark Antine at the time was, we were going back and forth and they just didn't agree with what we said. We said, "Well, do whatever you gotta do." And it's been how many years? So apparently they either figured out that we were either right or come back when you can't remember what you did the last time and...
They were right up against...
There were some wetlands.
More than a wetland, wasn't it Dan Watt Brook or something running through there?
Yeah, they needed, yeah, and we, it wasn't like we, basically, it wasn't like we stopped them, we came up with what they had to do and I think we, I'll have to go back, I just don't want to make any...
So he presented a plan for me, he wants to construct a single family on his lot that has no frontage and I told him with no frontage, I cannot issue a building permit. And then the argument was that the town owns it, the town should create the frontage.
Well, that was, we've gone, we've gone over that.
Okay, so I'm gonna take no action until he has some resolution with either this board or the highway superintendent, because without existing, without any frontage, there's no possible way I can issue a...
Well, my question is, he wants to do a house, but he was doing, he was doing a commercial building there.
Well, it's a business zone.
Yeah, his, right.
Oh, he wants to build a single-family house, which is allowed in the business zone on a smaller lot, 30,000 square feet. You're allowed to build a single-family home in the business zone.
No, I'm thinking, no, I know, but you can't do a subdivision and he's...
It's not a subdivision, it would be a Form A lot, he would have to, but there's no road, there's no road there.
No, wait a minute, no, that's how, that all depends how you look at it, no, that's not, that's a subdivision.
Okay, well...
If I go in and...
It's not a Form A lot if it doesn't have a front.
I'm just looking for some guidance, so if you can help me with that in the next couple weeks.
No, I will, I'll have to, I'll have to go back. Maureen, I'm sure we must have something, once you get...
Yeah, the site plan, it's still, it's still all, it was never signed.
Yeah, once, if you can...
I think they appealed it, they not appeal what?
They were supposed to and I remember, they went to Dennis a couple times and they were pretty hot and heavy about, you know, what we did.
It's still out, it's not put away.
Okay, good. Then why don't you leave that out and I'll, because then, once I get the dates, then I can go back and do the minutes and, because that's one I don't want to do, just like, you know, Basset Knoll, is it Basset Knoll, the preserve? You know, that was approved and then, you know, going back years later, trying to figure out what we did. So, I'll work with you on that, Bob, and...
Very good.
Because we have, there was legal opinion, there was zoning enforcement office opinion, there was a lot of opinions on that one. So we'll, we'll dig on that one. Anything else?
That's all I have.
We signed, this plan is signed, so, did you, did you make note of what Brooke asked for him to do?
I will make sure that he has certified letter, but it's, there's no change in the letter.
Yep.
No change in the plan other than the additions.
Addition of additions.
What's that?
Something else?
What, I'm sorry, Russ, what is it?
One, two, and three.
That was handled last meeting.
Yeah, that was voted on last meeting.
I tried to remember it from before, but it's in my pink book tonight. Yeah, I do have a circuit update.
Go ahead.
I won't read the whole thing to you, but you can get a copy to everybody, including Bob. There's an act in Boston to promote housing choices, it's H3507. And I'm just gonna read you the first paragraph. Massachusetts home prices have increased at the fastest rate in the nation and metropolitan Boston rent prices rank among the highest in the country. Camerel must build enough diverse housing stock, single-family homes, multiple families and small apartments to support our growing economy and provide our growing population with housing choices. Massachusetts must find new ways to encourage housing development. The plan is to have 135 new units, a unit could mean apartment or house or whatever by 2025.
135,000.
Thousand, yes, I'm sorry. Did I forget to say the thousand five? Okay, 135,000. There are a number of things that it proposes, well, they're not at all, they all happen, but some of the ones you might find interesting. Massachusetts is the only state in New England that requires a two-thirds majority vote for a zoning change. It proposes a single, a simple majority. What does some of the others? Reducing the required parking ratios, reducing dimensional requirements such as minimum lot sizes to allow houses to be built closer together, those type of things. If you get copies to all of them, I'm sure you, Bob especially, would find it kind of interesting.
Yeah, that came out probably six months ago.
Yeah.
From Governor Baker.
Well, I know there've been a couple of iterations about changing things and so forth, but it looks like they're getting real serious about it and I'll see what happens. The only other thing that was discussed is a grant program and I sent that information to Gordon, who was gonna send it over to our new town administrator, Mr. Walters, I believe is the name. That was about it.
On that note, Government Study Committee is actually gonna be looking at additional zoning for elderly housing. It's been, it's been brought to our attention that Rainham is lacking enough elderly housing, so we've had a discussion about trying to create an overlay or some kind of zone that would give some kind of incentives to builders or municipality or the town for that matter to add additional elderly housing. So that's something that we're probably gonna be discussing here at this board in the near future.
The problem with all of these great ideas and everything that we need, that we've discussed, if you look at our 2000 master plan, all these things are in the 2000 master plan and every time we, as a board, a planning board, we try to do our, what's right for the town and we put, spend a lot of time to adopt these things and we go forward and then you just shut down, whether it's town meeting, whether it's neighborhood complaints or, it's just...
Well, I think individually, individually, it's difficult as we saw with the 138 situation. I think if it becomes part of a master plan...
No, it's in our master plan though.
Well, we're working our existing master plan, so if they come up with better guidelines that more people can digest, we may be able to do something, you know, on those lines.
Problem with the...
They have mixed you zoning 20 years ago.
The problem with the, you know, the master plan is supposed to be viewed and it's supposed to be, the planning board is the one that's supposed to implement the master plan.
I was just gonna ask that, who's...
The planning board, it's our responsibility and even this board doesn't, you look at some things that is good and it doesn't get approved, it doesn't get put through. So, I agree 100%, I think the senior housing, we have an additional six acres, eight acres, something like that, that was, I think, Mr. Williams dealing it over and...
We have $200,000 in an account towards that as well.
Well, it's gonna be over $300,000 soon.
Yeah, but right now I talked to Mike King, he has a separate account where he holds that $200,000.
We created that account and that was the reason why we created the account and we created receiving funds in lieu of doing one and affordable, so we can put a lump sum of money over there and help them build more buildings. Again, it's in our master plan and it's by 2015, we were supposed to already have another two buildings up and, you know, it's all listed out.
I've heard, and I don't know how true the number is, that the waiting list is as long as 10 years, is that anyone else who'd...
Yeah, now it's, yeah.
That's a long time.
My grandmother died before she could...
I was just gonna say, yeah.
That's why we're building so many in-law apartments in town.
That's exactly, that's exactly it.
Yeah, maybe.
Now, one other thing, and I thought I brought it with me, we have, we have rules and regs, subdivision regs, we have our bylaws, we have another book, which is the housing, mass housing.
Mass housing?
Yeah, which is supposed to be where, it's outdated. We're doing the master, we're doing the master plan, well, it's along with the master plan.
Okay.
It's white paper, it's got a pretty green front, I have two...
Site plan regs?
No.
Sounds like a site plan regs.
No, it's, well, it's, when you pass out your regs, your books, you have three books downstairs, packets, the site plan, rules and regs, I...
Site plan, going bylaws and subdivision bylaws.
And then there's another...
You have a design guideline.
No, then there's another packet for housing and it was adopted, it was voted on and it's outdated.
Okay.
And if you look up FOTB's through the state, each town should, they don't, they don't have to, but each town should have it and I looked up and we do have it, it's just outdated, it needs to be, should be part of the...
New master plan.
The master plan, when they're doing the master plan, they should update that and I'll get you a copy.
I will?
Yeah, I got it from you, so I'm sure it's down there, but I thought I put it in my briefcase before it came. Anything else? We do have some work coming up over the winter for regs, I think there's a lot of, you know, I don't think it's big, but a lot of little things that need to be addressed and so I think over the winter would be a good time. We've always, years past, whenever we did them, we always did them separate from a regular meeting, so we could sit down and, you know, and hash things back and forth and I think that's what we should be doing, because it's too complicated to try to do it now.
Did you formally set up a public hearing for the, what, detention basin bylaw, reg? Has that formally been requested?
No, I'm with seven, I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
First meeting.
All right.
Very good.
Okay, with that said...
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on, favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye.